Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work Study Session. This afternoon's meeting is being held in the Tempe History Museum in the Community Room. There were some A/B issues we're working out back in the council chambers, but we are here one time only. I feel like I'm advertising a one-night-only concert of some sort. Item number one here is call to order. The work-study session is being held at the Tempe History Museum rather than the city council chambers. This change of venue does not impact those who wish to attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Council meetings can also be watched in real-time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Item number two is call to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the issue review session and committee of the whole items at this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per person. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards?
I have not received any.
Okay, sounds good. Let me just read this statement, just to make sure. Normally, we have a video, but since we're in a little bit of a different venue, I will read the statement, which is a little lengthier. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the meeting room. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the meeting room. Should individuals inside the meeting room become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, I will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, I will issue a verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the meeting room. If still no cooperation, I will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the meeting room. If no cooperation, then I will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only to escort them out of the meeting room. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed from the meeting, I will recess the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council this evening? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will move on to item number three, which are issue-review session items. First up, we have item 3A, Introduction of the Five-Year Capital Improvements Program Project Requests. And I see Tom Dunzing and Lisette Camacho. I'll look at a totally different setup here. Look at this.
On the stage.
If you want to.
Mayor, Members of the Council, good afternoon. I'm here with Lisette Camacho, Financial Services Director, and I'm Tom Dunzing, Chief Deputy City Manager. We're here to take a first look at the five-year capital improvement project that you have in your packet. It's quite an extensive document. And just so I can kind of set the stage, and then I'll turn the majority of the presentation over to Lisette. Really, in the budget process, there's two separate processes going on. One is the capital improvement process, which starts with this CIP, which is this agenda item. The other is the operating budget, and it's the next agenda item, and it starts with the long-range forecast. Those two items really come together, and they'll come together on April 18th at the Budget Review Sessions. And we'll go through, and that's where we really talk about the actual budget that we will present to council for adoption. This is an introduction. There's really no specific direction we are seeking from council. This is a first look at the CIP, and Lisette will go through and kind of help navigate through the document, how the hyperlinks work, and what's in there. And of course, staff is here to answer any questions that you may have. This is a five-year plan, and the plan really serves as a policy document. When we get to the budget adoption process, it's only the first year in the CIP that's actually formally adopted or legally appropriated by council. But it's very important that we have a plan set out, and so the council and the public can see what are the capital needs that have been identified by the departments. As a reminder, this capital improvement plan really serves as the basis for the upcoming November geo-bond election. We've got a number of projects in there that are identified as geo-bond-funded, and we will use that information when we come back to council and we develop the actual ballot questions. So the document really serves as the source document for the ballot questions. And today, again, no formal approvals will be made by council. This is a chance to review and kind of go through. It's a rather voluminous document, you know, north of 150 pages. But again, it really is just to get familiar with, you know, what staff has really identified as their capital needs. Council can certainly propose projects or move some things around in here, but there's been quite an extensive work done by staff on this. This is many months' worth of work that kind of culminates in this specific document. And really, a CIP document really is an evolution. So we have a, it's a five-year document, but it's an iterative process. We update this document every year. And in the purest sense, a project would start out in year five, and then each year it would move up a year. But we understand that things change and priorities change, and so it really is, it's important that we look at this every year. Again, Lisette and I are here to answer any questions. Staff is here if you have any specific project questions. Last thing I will say is this document does include a couple of items that we've talked about recently at work-study sessions. It includes an additional $134 million for the PQI acceleration that we've talked about quite extensively. $32 million is in this document over four, eight-year, $8 million a year over four years for affordable housing. And this document does contain about $12.2 million worth of historic preservation properties. And again, we've already discussed these with council. I really would like to thank the budget staff, Kevin D. Domenico, and Benicia Benson, who have put days, hours, and weeks into this information. It is quite an effort to get all this information from staff, so I really appreciate their efforts. And not to say the person beside me, who basically volunteered to step up why we are looking for a budget director. And I can tell you, we haven't skipped a beat on this, so, you know, hats off to the staff. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisette to kind of go through the presentation.
Although the specific projects in the proposed capital improvement program would address various city council priorities and performance measures, the presentation of all requested projects at this early point in the budget process is in line with transparency in government and developing strong community connections. The development of the city's operating and capital budget is a public process. In this slide is a review of the public meeting dates for both capital and operating budgets. On February 6th, we held a virtual and an in-person budget forum. Today, February 22nd, is the initial presentation of the proposed five-year capital improvement program. Later today, we'll also present the updated long-range forecasts for the major funds. On March 25th, we'll have the second presentation in the capital improvement program, and we'll discuss the projects that are recommended to be included in the five-year capital improvement program. During this meeting, staff will also present acceleration models and related strategies for the focus areas related to capital program. On April 18th, we'll have the presentation on the city manager's recommended budget. If needed, we've also scheduled a budget review follow-up on May 2nd. The tentative budget adoption is scheduled for May 21st, and the final budget adoption is on June 6th. We'll also have the first public hearing on the property tax levy on June 6th, with the final hearing and adoption of the property tax levy on June 27th. We've coordinated with Neighborhood Services and Community Engagement Office to develop a public outreach plan to provide information to our residents about the city's budget and also allow residents to provide us input and feedback during the budget development process. The online budget forum is currently open, and it'll be open until March 6th. This is where residents are provided a theoretical $100 to spend among various programs and services aligned to the five council priorities. On January 27th, we attended the Regional Unity Walk with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, or MAYAC. We had a booth there, and we provided information about the city's budget process to residents. As I said earlier, we had the virtual forum on February 6th. That meeting was recorded, and the recording is on the budget's website page. We'll also have a meeting with MAYAC on February 27th. In that meeting, we'll present the city's budget process and also work with them to complete an online survey to understand the budget priorities of Tempe's youth. In addition to the public forums, and we also have a public website that contains resources and information for our residents on all aspects of the operating and capital budgets. Lastly, we also informed our residents about the budget meetings and online resources via Tempe Today, press releases, and social media apps. Now we'll go over the CIP document that you have in front of you. The public can also access the CIP document via the Agenda Packet that's posted online. This document contains all the proposed projects for the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2029. The departments have submitted requests over the five-year CIP totaling $1.9 billion. In comparison, last year, we received requests totaling $1.8 billion. To help navigate the document, we provided a table of contents that contain links to the overall CIP program, as well as each of the 13 program summaries in the document. So that table of contents, if you click on the titles, it's a hyperlink, and it will take you to that page. On Page 1, it contains a summary of the entire five-year capital improvements program. Page 2 is an overall summary based on the proposed funding sources. We also have a summary page for each of the major programs that links to a listing of all the proposed projects in that program and the requested budget over the five-year CIP. For existing projects that will continue into fiscal year '24, '25, we've provided the amount of funds being re-appropriated and any additional new funding requests. New projects in the document are underlined. These are projects that have never been requested or were previously requested but not included in the adopted CIP. We've also provided bookmarks for each project request. If you click on the project name, it'll take you to the project description, where a narrative on the project, the purpose, the need, project priority type, alignment with city council's priorities and performance measures, any estimated costs and funding sources, anticipated completion schedule, and if there are any anticipated operating impacts. So the next three slides, I'll walk you through the document. So what you'll see here is a table of contents. And as I said earlier, the titles like solid waste program, wastewater program, if you clicked on that, it'll take you to the pages that those programs are located. For this particular example, you'd want to click on the general governmental program, which is the second to the last one in here. See, if you click on that, it'll take you to Page 43, which is going to be the summary page for the program. You'll want to scroll down to the second page where we have the engineering and transportation, and you'll click on the last project on here, which is the Mill Avenue Improvement. And once you click on that project, it will take you to the project detail, which includes the project description, council priorities addressed by the project, start date, completion date, proposed budget, and also the proposed funding sources. And at any time, you can always use the bookmark to go back to the table of contents, any of the project summary, or any project you wanted to view. That concludes our presentation. Again, Mayor, Members of the Council, we're not looking for council direction. At this meeting, we are seeking input about areas of priorities of emphasis over the next five years. And as a reminder, we'll be back on March 25th to discuss with council the initial recommended CIP, and this is another opportunity for all of you to provide input on next year's capital program. With that, Mayor, I'll turn over the presentation to you for council input.
Thank you, Lisette. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Anyone on the council have any comments or questions? Yes, Councilman Garland?
I just want to say thank you so much for the hyperlinks. It makes it so easy when you're going through the document to be able to click on those and be able to go back, so thank you so much for doing that. It was very helpful.
That's Benicia Benson for you.
Sounds good. Anyone else? Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have item number 3B here, which is the Long Range Financial Forecast Update, and I see Tom and Lisette again.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Again, Tom Dunzing, Chief Deputy City Manager, and I'm joined by Lisette Camacho, the Financial Services Director. Now what we're doing is we took a look at the capital side of things and kind of kicked that off. On the operating budget side, the long-range forecast is really the kickoff of the operating budget process. And what the long-range forecast does is it does a few things. It really gives us an idea of our parameters that we can use for this upcoming budget, but it also gives us a little bit longer-term view of how are we doing and do we need to make any adjustments now for events that may happen in the future? Or are we looking pretty positive, and can we really start to talk about expanding services? You'll hear a couple of recurring themes, and probably the biggest you'll hear about today is residential rental. Residential rental affects our operating revenues, and I've got a couple of slides on that as we kind of go through that. And what we're here to do is really present you with the information, and I'm going to hit on a couple of funds, one being the general fund, which is typically in a budget process about 90% of the discussion, and it's typical for governments for that to be the fund of discussion. We'll also talk a little bit about the transit fund, because in those two funds, what we're recommending is that we go down the path of what we call budget balancing, and we'll present to council kind of what we are recommending to do. Luckily, both these funds are very healthy right now, but what we need to do is take a kind of a long-term look at both these funds, and we'll be coming back to council with certain recommendations, especially on the transit fund. We'll be coming back to council, and we want to hit, for the general fund, sort of a high-level concept of what we'd like to do or what we're recommending, and we'll take council feedback to balance this fund with the loss of residential rental. And again, I'll get into that. This is a much shorter presentation and documentation than the CIP that we just went through, but that doesn't mean that work didn't go into this. And again, I'd be remiss if I didn't call out the budget staff, Lori Ozakowski, Scott Gruber, Carrie Taylor, Kevin D. Domenico, and of course, Benicia Benson, who's kind of the glue that kind of pulls all this together, so really appreciative of their efforts. And I'll turn it, I think Lisette's got the next couple of slides, and then I'll come back out and, or come back and talk about the general fund.
Good afternoon again. The long-range financial forecast directly aligns with the financial stability of the city. The specific performance measures are 5.04 and 5.05, maintaining the highest general obligation bond rating and maintaining general fund fund balance within policy levels. I went through the public meeting dates in the first presentation, but for the benefit of the public, I'll go ahead and go through this again very quickly. Today is February 22nd, and earlier, we presented the initial capital improvement program, and now we're presenting the updated long-range forecast. We are going back to city council on March 25th to propose the initial recommended capital projects for inclusion in the five-year program. On April 18th, we'll review the city manager's recommended budget, and if needed, we'll have a budget review follow-up on May 2nd. The tentative budget adoption is on May 21st, and the final adoption is on June 6th, along with the first hearing of the property tax levy. The property tax levy will be adopted on June 27th. Tom will go over the general fund forecast, so I'll turn over the presentation to him right now.
Thanks, Lisette. So what you see here are general assumptions. This crosses all the operating funds, and I'll get into the general fund here in a minute. But overall, we are forecasting that the economy really is going to remain stable. There's no signs of a recession out there. If there's, if there are signs of a recession, we watch for that every month. We watch sales tax and lots of information that's out there every month, so we stay on top of it as best we can. And when we do get signs of that, you know, we will come back to council. Again, that second bullet point, talk a little bit about the elimination of the residential rental tax that is effective January 1st, 2025. So in this upcoming fiscal year, about six months of the fiscal year, we will have that revenue, and about six months of the year, that revenue will no longer be coming to Tempe. We do anticipate inflation. Inflation has slowed, but we still build it into this forecast model, so as the years go by, we do have different assumptions for inflation on different categories. Within this forecast, we do anticipate that we will have annual increases consistent with our Memoranda of Understanding with our different employee groups. And one thing I'd like to call out is we just recently initiated our classification and compensation study that council approved back in, I believe it was January. And we are anticipating an impact from that. We frankly won't know till probably the end of this calendar year what that impact will be, but we need to get prepared for that. And a little bit on the revenue side is we are seeing a reduction in state corporate tax collections. That impacts our state shared revenues, so we did dial those down a little bit, but overall, it really didn't change the forecast that you saw in November, and we're still on track, kind of where we thought we would be. We anticipate continued strong building in trades. You know, the development is still happening in Tempe, and so we're very appreciative of that. And finally, with the interest rates, one of the silver linings is we are seeing increased revenues from our investments. So we did forecast increased interest earnings, which is a good thing for all the operating It's usually user...
You have to hold it down.
Oh, you have to hold it? There we go. So a few updates. I kind of hit on this briefly. The local taxes, we adjusted them slightly. We look at trends every single month, and so if you go back and compare to November, our local taxes, we did adjust them down a little bit. Definitely not material. I talked a little bit about the state shared revenues, and really, that's driven by corporate income tax, which we will have to watch that, because we're not quite sure, and the state's not quite sure, why the reduction in corporate income tax collections, but it is impacting us and impacting all government agencies that rely on that. I talked about the classification and compensation study, which was not in the November. It's new to this one, so it's in there. And finally, I touched on budget balancing efforts. General fund, what we are recommending, even though we have six months' worth of residential revenue coming in, we are recommending, we do budget measures now. It's always better to get to them early, and I'll talk about those. The transit fund, what we're waiting for, and it's in really good financial shape now, but what we are recommending is that we wait until the November general election to see what happens with Prop 479. That's the Maricopa County sales tax. We benefit directly from that. It does impact the transit fund. So at this point, we are recommending no budget balancing measures until we understand what's going to happen with 479. Oh, there we go. Ah, went too far. Council's seen this slide before, but I put it in here just to remind. Again, this year that's coming up that we're going to start budgeting for is FY '24, '25. We're going to have half a year of impact of sales tax loss, the first full year of residential rental loss. We're talking about $21 million in lost revenue. These numbers haven't changed from what we've presented before, but you really see it's a recurring impact. So those are the challenges that we have built into this forecast, that lost revenue. And I can tell you, the general fund and the transit fund, I talk about that. The Arts and Culture Fund is still very stable, and so the loss of the revenue in the Arts and Culture Fund really is not impacting any sort of services that we're delivering out of that fund. And overall, the residential rental represents about 9% of total sales tax revenues we get Just real quick, what you see here are, and it's a little bit difficult to see, is the sales tax trend. Again, we are seeing nice, solid, slow growth. You see that the solid line, which is the actual monthly collections, jump up and down a little bit. That's primarily due to the timing from the state of remitting Tempe's portion of sales tax. Sometimes there's delayed payments. We also get audit payments, which will cause that to go up and down. But really, the story here is that dashed line, and what you see in the dashed line, it's a nice, smooth increase, and that's really what we like to see. I'm going to spend just a little bit of time, and I know this is hard to see, so you may have to look in your packets. What we do is we forecast out five years. We forecast out for this current year and the four subsequent years. And really, what this allows us to do is really determine, are we able to kind of live within our means? Is there an issue out here? If we backed off on our revenues, it would be a very different story on what we're able to provide. But what you see here is basically really nice increases in revenues. In the expenditure, oh, in all these numbers, you need to multiply by 1,000. And so what you see here is really nice increases in revenues, and the expenditure line is really the city maintaining its service levels. And finally, really, it's that section in the middle, well, I guess it's toward the bottom, that's really what we look at to see, can we add additional services? What's our capacity to add costs to the general fund? And as council understands, we add costs or services through a budget supplemental process. Well, the level of budget supplementals that we're willing to entertain is really driven by that section called estimated new funding for analysis purpose, but that's what we do. We look at that and say, is there capacity to add services? If we go back to November, the recurring supplemental line, what we anticipated is status quo in November, $5 million, $5 million, $5 million. That's $5 million of recurring costs that we add every year. And again, that was in November, which was not sustainable. So now what we're doing, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and this is the November, I'll talk a little bit about what is the budget balancing strategy for us to be able to adjust to the residential rental loss? And it'll be on this next slide, which is, whoops, which is the February 2024 forecast. Let's see. There we go. And so what you'll see on this current forecast that's before council tonight, there's a couple of changes. Working closely with our city manager, who, by the way, wrapped her head around this very quickly. What you'll see is the way we are dealing with this residential rental loss is basically lowering, and I will call it a significant lowering, of the amount of supplementals we're able to entertain. And you'll see on a subsequent slide is what we've directed departments to do is there are no budget supplementals, and the no supplementals, unless we want to go impacting current service levels, is for a period of three years. And the simple math on that, if we're losing $15 million in the general fund, but our prior forecast had $5 million of additional supplementals each year, if we back off three years of supplementals, that's the $15 million. And there's a few other things that go up and down. It's much more complicated than that, but in a nutshell, that's really what we are recommending, is we back off significantly with our budget supplementals that you'll see. And again, I want to be clear, back off over a period of three years. We also backed off on a little bit of cash-funded capital. It's not significant, but we had to do what we needed to do to basically get that funded balance, that estimated fund balance, which is in that upper-right chart, to remain within the yellow area. That yellow area is our fund balance policy. I can tell you, this is very important. Our bond rating agencies, they look at this. They look at this very closely. And what they want to see is that we are making very serious decisions on maintaining the stability of the general fund, which we always do, which we always do. Just a few of the highlights. Again, half a year's loss, but the total, what we're looking at in the general fund, the recurring amount, 14, 15 million dollars a year. I hear council quote that number quite often. The capacity for recurring and non-recurring supplementals, what we have done is what I call a significant reduction over three years. There are a couple of items that I want to call out that we are forecasting that will happen. Two very important projects. One is the bringing up the Real-Time Operations Center. There are software costs involved with that, and we knew this was a priority, so we went ahead and included those. And those will be up when we bring forward a budget for council to actually vote on. The other is the impact of Novus. As council understands, we've got about an acre and a half that they will very generously give the city. But what we have to do is we have to eventually staff that. So what we've decided to do, instead of a fire company all in one year, we've worked for fire, medical, rescue. And what we're proposing in this forecast is adding a fire company but spreading that out over three years. And there's certain efficiencies that we're going to get with that. If we don't have a new facility at that point, those positions will absolutely be utilized to kind of backfill our current services. And so you will see that in the upcoming budget process. Again, I talked a little bit about the classification and compensation study. We are anticipating that our permits will remain strong through development of the city, and thank you, Michael D. Domenico. And at this point, there are certain CIP projects that we are cash-funding. We didn't change that. It's not a real significant amount, but it is, it's funding some projects that are priority council, you know, some of the historic preservation projects and a few other of the cash funding. So we did keep that in there at this point. And I guess overall, what I'll say is we are able to manage the reduction in residential rental. I can tell you, three years of no supplementals is very important to maintain the stability of the fund if nothing happens, if we don't get any legislative relief down at the state. But at this point, we are able to manage this. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisette to talk about the other operating funds.
This slide is the enterprise funds. The water and wastewater fund is stable and meets the fund balance policy throughout the forecast period. The revenues include the planned rate adjustments in the future, and we also assume a planned drawdown of fund balance in a sustainable manner that includes increased pay-as-you-go or cash funding of the CIP projects. The solid waste fund is also stable and is projected to stay within fund balance policy throughout the forecast period. The revenue forecast also includes planned rate adjustments in the future. The emergency transportation continues to have a stable outlook. The forecast includes recurring capital budget for replacement and refurbishing of our ambulance Moving on to the special revenue funds. The transit is the fund that is most affected by the loss of the residential rental sales tax. Throughout the forecast period, you'll notice that the fund balance is declining, but it's still within the fund balance policy. As Tom said, in November, the voters will vote on Proposition 479. This is the ballot measure to extend the half-cent sales tax for transportation. The forecast, as Tom said, does not include any changes to transit services. And once we know the outcome of Proposition 479, we'll go back to council with an update and recommendations. The transportation fund, or highway user revenue fund, is stable and also meeting fund balance policies throughout the forecast period. This fund is subject to legislations because the revenues we receive is based on a formula. So we continue to monitor this fund to ensure that there aren't any pending legislations that will affect the distribution of the revenues to the city. The Arts and Culture Fund is the third fund that is affected by the residential rental revenue loss. This fund is stable and maintains a healthy fund balance. The forecast includes increased cash funding of capital projects. That concludes our presentation, and we'll open it up for questions and any input that you have.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, council. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Garland?
So in this budget, just to be clear, I just want to, we are, with the positions that we have that are open, they're staying open. But any new positions, we are capping those, right? We're not going to be doing?
Yeah, Mayor members of the council, you know, we budget for certain positions, and if they're not filled, this forecast assumes that all those positions will be filled eventually. We are not losing any of the vacant positions. What it does do is does not add any positions on top of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Any comments or questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Adams?
Thanks for a great presentation, and I know we're in good hands with the two of you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, on the vacancies, are we classifying some of those vacancies? Are we moving vacancies into different departments to help out? I think of PD, and I get that all the time. You know, what are we doing with PD? Are they staffed right? Are they appropriately staffed? Are those considerations that are being addressed?
Yeah, actually, a very good question, Mayor members of the council. We have, council authorizes certain FTEs, and those FTEs, once we have them authorized, we do have an administrative process that can reclass those positions. And very simply, if Chief McCoy said, I don't need, you know, this certain, you know, property evidence person, I want to reclass them to something else, we don't come back to the council. We've got an administrative process that takes care of that. And that's the same with any other position in the city.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone else for the comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. That brings us to item number 3C, 2024 tribal gaming grant proposals. And I see Shawna. Hello.
Hello. Mayor, members of city council, Shawna Warner, Government Relations Director. And today, I'm here to review our 2024 tribal gaming grant proposals and seek council direction to move forward with submitting them. So Arizona State statute does require our tribal communities to contribute 12% of annual gaming proceeds to local governments for public benefit purposes. And these tribal grants align with our council priority 5.10, achieving revenue forecast actual variance for a budget year of plus or minus 3% for local taxes and intergovernmental In your background materials, you'll find the city's proposed tribal community grant applications. As part of our annual budget process, staff does use the city's five strategic priorities to identify projects and programs that connect with the performance measures that drive these priorities. And this year's internal requests came from six departments and totaled just over $2.6 million. They have already been evaluated for initial and ongoing operating maintenance and capital costs. And then the city does also act as a pass-through for a portion of the tribal communities' contributions to our external partners. So following this meeting and with council input, staff will align the internal proposed projects with our individual tribal council priorities into resolutions for the respective tribal communities. You'll see those resolutions on the March 7 council meeting agenda. And then after approval, the application materials are turned into the tribal communities. Each one has a different deadline. And then those decisions follow subsequently, anticipating fall of 2024. But again, are different for each of the communities. And then with that, any questions?
Sounds good. Thank you, Shawna. Anyone, any comments or questions? Council? All good? Okay.
It was delayed.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Shawna. All right. Next up on the item, on the agenda, is the call to the audience for committee of the whole items. There are no items ready for city council direction or status update this evening, so I will close out number four and get to number 5B, which are council committees in progress, updates as needed. Any council members have any updates on items 5B1, 5B2, or 5B3? All right. Seeing none, that brings me to item number six, future agenda items. Members of the city council may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session, but in accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Are there any future agenda items that council members would like to add? Councilmember Navarro?
Just a question. I had an agenda item, and just for clarity, if we have it ready on schedule, it was the North Tempe kind of development area, the plan of what is going off of Scottsdale Road and in and around the North Tempe area. I know we wanted to try to give an update to the residents with development, like Food City, and then also the additional development that Scottsdale's doing south of McDowell, and how that translates within that community and Tempe's community.
Madam City Manager?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Navarro. I believe that that is on the list. If not, we will get it on there. We have had active conversations that we'll probably bring in an executive session regarding North Tempe.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on council? Any future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, that will take me to item number seven, announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. I don't have anything this evening. Madam City Manager?
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Sounds good. Well, that brings us to item eight, which is adjournment. The next scheduled work city session is scheduled for March 14th, 2024. We are adjourned.